Cheerleading.
The ones I need to like get the work done, I can I can cheer them on. I am not I'm not.
We go to.
Never happen.
We're done.
I try.
Weird thing at Jeff City because the state track meet is hosted by Jeff City. School. State track meet on Friday, Saturday. We're in school on Friday. As I come back next week. You're humongous. They are going the whole week now, so it's like he's he's got five or something. Went to a fair game. Like a couple of years. To say that next week. Right. We're not getting the state. You're going to dip below tennis wise that day regardless. I think it's weeks to work. Credit for a day. I think this will work. The fun. The bar. Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday.
All right. Welcome everybody to the school board meeting. Called the meeting to order. Have a motion to approve the agenda. Some. A second. Motion and a second. Redirect and. For yes. So same. Agenda. We don't have anybody for open forum. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
A second.
All right, all in favor, right hand. Oppose. Same.
For our state.
Okay, all right, thank you. Approval of the minute. So. Should have asked for comment, but. Okay. Google or transfer payment of bills, any questions on transfer builds?
Yeah.
I had a list of questions too, I think I got them all resolved with. Questions will probably be along the same lines.
This is informative for me really. We're here, right, on the just cutting this one?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we account when we. Buying some athletic equipment through Amazon. Right, baseballs and such, Lena.
The heavy balls for baseball.
That type of thing right through Amazon. I just noticed we had athletic account, couple of athletic account dollars through Amazon there. One or six bucks, forty one dollars. Was this like a school account where they don't, we're gonna not have to pay shipping and that's my question?
Right.
No shipping?
No ship.
Okay. Then this is informative for me, it's like, because I'm a new kid. Go down to the thing for Springfield Public Schools and the. Virtual learning. Okay, that's. Is that what I would purchase edgenuity in the 2020?
That's launched, so it's our kids to are on virtual.
Okay.
And that is through Springfield Public Schools, so that's why the payment is to them.
Right. What's the difference in that, what I'm referring to is edgenuity, you know what I'm talking about?
I do know, I don't know price difference, what the.
This is what the program use instead of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
And the a part of the difference if I'm remembering edgenuity right, and it's been a few years since I used it. There's not a live teacher in edgenuity, I don't think, it's all just online learning. And through launch, through Springfield Public Schools, they actually have a live teacher.
Oh, like a Zoom.
Somewhere. Yeah.
Or is it video?
Some of it's videos, some of it is.
Edgenuity has videos, I think.
Some of it.
It's a it's a mix, I'm not totally familiar, I just was.
Yeah, but they do have a teacher that they are accountable to for everything that they do.
Okay. That that's that's a tip.
That's it.
The questions I asked were about the what where wash was is the dishwasher.
Yes.
And it was three thousand dollars, I I do know those were expensive, but I also know, once they start to break down, they continue to break down, and at some point you gotta cut your losses to get a new one, you know how old our dishwasher is?
It's fairly old, I mean, it's, I don't know exactly how old, no. Part of our problem with this one was we had so much line buildup in it, but then it started breaking some parts, so we had it completely cleaned out. The kitchen staff now knows that they need to put. Line away is what I call it, but something like that, and how often they need to do that, part of that I think was a training piece. We had switched so many cafeteria stuff that they weren't doing that like they should. The other thing is, is I really, really, really talked to Steve too about making sure that the water softener always has salt in it.
Sure.
So we got it all cleaned out, we have it repaired, so I think, I mean, I think it'll last us a little while longer than it was an expensive repair.
And then the other one I looked at, I don't know if anybody had questions, there was a safety select, a safety goggle cabinet, and it showed five thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for a safety goggle cabinet. Not knowing what a safety goggle cabinet is, which I now know it sanitizes the safety goggles.
Right.
Which. When I was at school, we all just wore each other's safety goggles, but evidently there were five of them.
There were five.
Five.
We bought five, we bought one for all three science rooms in the middle school and high school, and one for both backgrounds, so.
And I would think that'd be like a probably. For a lot of work.
It went through the Department of Health and Senior Services.
Okay.
That weekend.
Okay.
So it actually doesn't cost us anything.
Very good.
Reimburse pretty grand.
I was curious about the. The expense to Osage County nine one one communications.
We have what's called the rave app, I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but I have this weekly table, you know, I'm trying not to. It's it's kind of a one stop shop app, so if. God forbid, if we had an intruder in the building, you can just push that button, it automatically sends a message to nine one one and all of the emergency responders. If we had a medical emergency, there's a medical app, a medical button, we would just push the medical button, and it would dispatch. Medical personnel out, so it's it's just a one stop shop app, we've actually had it for several years, but last year, because. Almost all of the Osage County Public and Pro Field Schools were interested in it. The Osage County nine one one center. Kind of formed an consortium so that it lowered the price for all of us, so all of the schools pay them directly.
Have we used it for much of anything?
No. Thank you, which is a good thing.
Okay. All right. I will say.
I was at like a doctor's. It did go off one time for a fire, which was a false alarm, but.
So we've got it over at State Tech, and we probably use it. I'd say it probably twice a month, that's usually always medical emergencies. And usually somebody doesn't eat breakfast and they get dizzy and pass out. That is the the most common thing we are using for there, but it works really well.
It does, yeah.
It's worth having if you ever have. No accident. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the transfer payment of bills?
Oh, my God, motion to approve the transfer payment of bills.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, right hand. Both saying. Transfer payment billed is approved, report.
The Romans, they pretty steady there, we're at three or four at this point. Lots of activities, I mean, it's just a busy, busy time of the year, so I listed some of the field trips they have still yet to go on, or they've just recently gone on. Still have one more this week, fourth grade sliding in, a trip to courthouse tomorrow. Little reading update, we on our PD day on May the ninth. Dr. Brown was here, and we just kind of went over our data for the year, we looked at what was going well, what things we want to do differently next year, set some action plans in place. Did some vertical teaming to discuss students and and different things with our grade levels. We did some individual action plans, so we're ready to hit the ground running in the fall and not wait for all of our data to come in, we can go and get interventions in place as soon as the school year starts. So that is a big plus for us, and then those conversations help the new teachers just, you know, whoever's gonna have the child the next year, to know a little bit more about that child. We, our data showed a significant gain in our foundational reading skills, and therefore, you know, we would continue to use the Saxon anyway, because we want to give it a few years and make sure it's working, but it is showing that good things are happening, which we could see throughout the year, but it was nice to see that on the big picture of our data. Haggerty will continue using that, which is just a phonemic awareness program in K three. Will continue with our data analysis, we'll implement some datamines next year, that's gonna look just a little bit different, it'll be the same kind of thing, but the teacher's more of it in their hands rather than that being given that data. And continue with our tiered interventions, so I just put a little bit of information in there, so you could see where we were beginning of the year and then end of the year, and how our students have shifted in those foundational reading skills. And then. I did want to point out that our our kindergarten's first grade went and took the math, the May evaluate test, our other kids were doing math testing and so forth, so they did not continue, but K one did their end of year evaluate. And just they were so excited, a couple of them called me and said, go look, go look, it's so fantastic, sixty eight percent of our students were proficient in grade level standards in the ELA, and sixty nine percent were proficient in math grade level standards, so that's. We're talking about, you know, there's foundational standards and things they need to learn, but then there's also their grade level standards, so really some positive data there for the work that those teachers have put in at the time, those the work those kids have put in. We'll have several stepping up type celebrations, kindergarten, fifth grade, sixth grade, we're all doing some celebrations here coming up this week, and the second grades even doing a little something because they're moving upstairs, and they're celebrating coming upstairs. Which they're nervous and excited about, so just want to recognize that Chief Bickle worked with anonymous donor to bring some more bicycles to our kids, and I made tell you four exciting kids last week to get to come around that corner and see what they've got. So, and I've even I even got feedback from one of the parents today who called and said, I just want you to know, it absolutely just made her day, she rode that bike all weekend long, so some good work just goes on out there behind the scenes in this community and just worth noting. Sweet Bee Shaved Ice was really supportive of our map kiddos and and gave them a discounted cost for some shaved ice when we went over to the park, and they also. Give some gift certificates to the health department department to give away during field day. Field day was held last week, it was a hot day, but it was great, they had a good time, popsicles and fun and. Class of twenty twenty two came and helped run the events, and I just, I feel like the whole day went great, Mrs. Baker and Coach Han worked together and really organized that whole day, and it was just, the teachers couldn't say enough about how well, how how well organized it was. We did have a VIP dance a couple of weeks ago, and we just invited students to come out, bring their very important people, and they had an absolute fall in the gym, so that might be something we want to continue doing. Thought maybe we turn it into a small fundraiser just to support some student activities that we want to do next year, and disregard my shirt, it was clean, I don't know what happened. End of year, I'm like, oh my gosh, I came with them, stand up with a dirt shirt on. Awards coming up here this week. And then first grade had their living zoo, I kind of wanted to mention that because that was just such a tremendous turnout that night, so many parents in the building, kids did a fantastic job turning into their zoo animal, I just love to see those annual events, you know, the older kids are like, oh, I remember I did that, I was, I was a lion, or I was this, and it was, it's just fun to see those annual things that say, hey, that's something that went, a little milestone that we passed through here. We had staff appreciation week first week of May, so wanted to send out a big thank you to Tricia Orshlin over at rejuvenation station in Jeff City, she donated several items to help us create a little mini spot, allow the teachers to go and have a little chance to rejuvenate during the week, and then Tricia Uley had a heated massage chair she let us borrow, and some plants and other items, and just helped bring them together, so that was fantastic, and then there's several dates there, the summer school beginning May twenty. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much, the the reading, the reading scores, will you see those drop back again next year, and you'll see improvement as a year ago, or do you think you'll see improvements in the first graders and second graders that'll carry over next year?
It'll be curious to see, because some of the kids that are in this are our fifth and sixth graders are early in the building, and our sixth graders, we only have two students right now in an at risk type level, so, you know, our goal is that by the time those kids reach that end of elementary, they have good foundational skills, sometimes it takes a little while in the middle grades, so we do have a lag, it would be next year's third, fourth, and fifth grade. That's where we see the biggest concern, that we're putting a lot of time and energy into, and then it will depend on what our kindergarten brings in, so the numbers will look a little different, but we hope that we see that those students that we worked so hard with, that those individual students maintain that piece, and they should, because we're talking about missing skills, so you're putting in pieces that they didn't know and applying those, rather than just knowledge for them to remember, so we'll see, but we'll.
Do you attribute any of that to like a COVID lag, or is it just?
I'd say it's two part, there's a couple of things, COVID, absolutely, not just the shutdown, but even the next year, where we had lots of kids missing so much school, so much learning was just missed, we also didn't have a systematic phonics. Program in place, and so getting that in place this year, now we have kindergarten first and second with a really solid tier one instruction and phonics and phonemic awareness, and it just takes a little while to get those pieces in place for them to learn them, so this year was a learning year for them with phonics, but they did extremely well, they're such fans of the program now, especially first and second, they saw such growth in their kids, that I think that's only gonna dig in and get better and better. So those foundational skills, if you, if we can get our kids up to third grade and you don't have phonics issues, that's our goal. So now we're learning, we're reading to learn, we make that shift at third grade, so that is our goal.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Jake Hughes.
All right, only two things I had to add, you have a report of questions, but I graduation on Sunday, and then Thursday at six, we have eighth grade graduation, so got rid of the seniors on Sunday, I was thinking that, like, well, great class two thousand twenty two did a great job, changing, helping change the culture, put their handprint on the wall, that's something we're gonna start, they're gonna leave their handprint on the wall, they really, but I'll take questions, if you have questions.
Project graduation, we're okay?
As far as I know.
I guess that's not really it.
Yeah, I don't, I, yeah, as far as I know, I didn't hear anything, so.
There were, there were a lot of, a lot of kids and parents there.
So you had a professional development day recently?
Monday, yes.
Okay.
And we looked at the data, looked at that, and then we looked at some things that, some changes that they'd like to, for me to look at this summer, talk with the new superintendent and see, and then propose some things to the board at their company.
Okay, so like the the book bag on a lot of classrooms, that's just.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a safety factor, because our, our classrooms are getting so large that get kids in there, and their bags in there, moving around. People are tripping over those type of things, so a lot of teachers right now are not allowing book bags because of rooms are small, so at other schools we have, we just still allow book bags in there just because of the safety factors, tripping on those type of things, those are things that they want me to look at, so I just thought we would, we would look at it and see. The problem with it is our lockers are really small too, so it's kind of a catch point to what we're gonna do there, so that like with Ms. Peters's class, she has some people in journalism or in English, English three, but. There's no place for them, so then for tripping. Not, not, nothing definite, just looking at some things, seeing what we need to do with that. Just some items for discussion.
Any questions? Mr. Garrett, athletic report.
I do have one thing for Mr. Garrett to report, our golf team did finish fourth today at state, Jeff Mason took, he came all state with fourth, Connor McDaniel took seventeenth, Brett Winslow took twentieth, and Rhett Robinson took sixteenth there, so yesterday they had, they had a tough day, they were about six shots below by battling, didn't think they would pull out with that. Great day today, so congratulations to all.
Very nice, we were just talking about when the last time that happened, and you thought it was.
Thirteen fourteen ish, if someone else can help me with that, no, that's fantastic, when the athletic team gets a state trophy, it's, that's tremendous, it's a big deal, that's a banner in the gym, and that's immortality, there you go, we support that.
It's not the trophy they wanted, but, you know, we're expecting it, but they battled back, I know Doc and Coach Ross yesterday.
They're walking out there with that one being fifth.
Yeah. They really, they hit really well with that, they they did really well with that, because I think that Jeff yesterday was sixteenth or something like that, he came up all state.
Yes.
That's great, congratulations to him and the boys and to Coach Ross for sure, that's that's cool.
That's gotta be intimidating, going to Springfield, going to River Cut, when you're used to playing. It'll say country club.
Must have, must have did something to them last night.
Smith, superintendent reports.
I don't have a whole lot to add other than what's in my report, we will have our end of the year lunch on Friday at noon in the high school cafeteria, and at that time is when we give out our five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five year, thirty year awards, and we honor our retirees, so you're welcome to come if you're available for that. The other thing I wanted to mention that's not in my report is that we did have a walkthrough today with Ree Hagan and TMI, so they are set to start next week. They thought. They said, don't hold them to this, obviously, but, I mean, I know their hope is to finish with the admin building within a couple of weeks, so. And then hopefully start that unit back up so admin can move back into the admin building, and then move in this direction, but. They're ready to get started, they did a complete walkthrough today, didn't see necessarily anything that surprised them other than any lane's office, I don't know, it's been probably a month ago now, her unit started making a really unique noise. And our system has been turned off because the air is not working anyway, so we turned it off, but today they got up there and looked, and there is something wrong with that unit in her office that is outside the scope of the. Quote, so getting that fixed will be an additional cost, but I don't know how much at this point, so, anyway, they are ready to go next one.
All right, very good. Moving on to discussion action items, let's talk about the budget. You want to lead us, give us an overview of the budget?
I will, and I first want to say I've had some really good questions asked from you guys over this, and I appreciate that. So our budget for this year, this first information, of course, is just general information, but going into our budget for this year, there are some things that, that are, that I call major budget assumptions. And the state adequacy target for next year is set to be at sixty three seventy five, we never set it at that to start with, because sometimes it takes a while to get to that, and so we've set it at, I've set it at sixty three sixty five, I fully expect to get to sixty three seventy five, but that gives us a little bit of a cushion there. Same with prop seed revenue, prop seed is always kind of a. Unknown, because it's totally dependent on state sales tax, so they're projecting it to be as high as one thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars per weighted average daily attendance, I've set it at, let's see, I mistake, I forgot to take out of there, but I set it at twelve hundred dollars. Because it really is just an estimate, because you just don't know how much, you know, your state sales tax is gonna be, but state sales tax revenues are really good, right, so hopefully they will reach that target. Classroom trust fund, which is your gambling money, is expected to be at four twenty eight, and I have budgeted four fifteen, so that's. Our federal programs, special ed, part B, and other state programs like Career Technical Ed and Perkins have not released their allocations yet, so the numbers in the budget for those right now are based on this year. I don't expect them to fluctuate much, they usually don't, but just so you know, those will need to be revised at some point. Our assessed valuation, of course, shouldn't, should increase next year as well, although it's not a reassessment year. I've increased it by about two percent with hopes that, of course, it will go higher than that. I am recommending a thousand dollars to the base, and. Then, of course, we added a third grade position this year, we hope to add a special ed intervention position, so far we have not had any luck with that, so Tracy and I have actually talked about. The potential of adding a para instead of a teacher, so that we can at least get some additional support, so that would actually save the district money if that's what ends up happening, but at this, at this point, that teaching position is in the budget, just in case we get lucky and find somebody, but it may switch to a para position. I'll talk about career ladder in just a minute. But, and I'll talk about thirty eight thousand dollars to the base. And just a minute or two, so our anticipated revenues are seven million eight hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and eighty three dollars, our anticipated expenditures are seven thousand six hundred and sixty nine thousand six hundred and seven dollars, and so that leaves us a total difference of one hundred and sixty three thousand five hundred and seventy six dollars, some of that's restricted, so when you look at unrestricted revenue and unrestricted expenses, this budget has a, an anticipated surplus of eighty six thousand five hundred and forty two dollars. And then the rest of that first document are just major revenues, major expenses, it doesn't include every single revenue and expense, because some of them are pretty minor, but it includes the major ones, so you can kind of see what's being paid in each of those areas. You also have a copy of our bond issue payment schedule, so you can see that, and you have a. Description of what I have budgeted money for in capital projects. The elementary HVAC was actually budgeted this year, but most of that is gonna be paid on next year, so that money that was budgeted for that this year, this carries over into next year. We really need a new outfield softball fence, so I budgeted for that, and then I put in there seventy thousand dollars for miscellaneous projects, just because I don't know where you guys are gonna head next year with capital projects, so I put that in there as a type of placeholder, so that that money could be budgeted, but if you don't use it, it just carries over, so. And then our custodial equipment that we purchased almost three years ago now will be paid off next year, so that's. And then you can see our CDs and money markets, and then you get to the budget document itself, so if you have specific questions or want me to go over something in more detail, I will gladly do that.
I have specific questions, and I apologize, my colleagues already asked them, you guys already had a conversation about it, um, okay, what type of transportation cost increase are we incurring?
We increase about two percent.
Is there any concern that's gonna be more? With, like if gas is five dollars a gallon in three months, I understand, like, how does, I guess, I guess I'm asking how the contract with regrowth is gonna work and everything like that, is is a blocked contract, or I'm sure they're gonna, they're gonna have to be in clubs and.
We do get billed for a gas increase over a certain amount, and without looking at the contract, I cannot remember what that amount is.
Right.
I have over budgeted in that area.
Okay, well, that was kind of a question, like, what did you, you know, I mean, you've accounted for.
Yes.
What would maybe be a larger than average possibility?
Yes.
For, I would just think that we would probably, that's probably what.
Definitely a possibility, yes, and we have some of that going on now, so we have some of those. Gas overages, if you will, that we're paying now to just.
Okay, the other question, the other question I have has to do athletic supplies budgets. Um, man, it's way down in the weeds here, but anyway. I just, okay, to you, we have extremely small budgets for athletic supplies per sport. And then there is, I believe it's a seven thousand dollars pool. And then I football's in there twenty five hundred bucks. Exceedingly larger than the other sports, which it's probably going to be. But like those specific numbers, they're just not remotely close to being able to purchase all the equipment or supplies we would need for said activity. Yearly, I'm going to assume the way we do it is the coach or director of the activity requisitions the A D to get to go above his or her budget. To get whatever they need, probably right. And it dips into that seven grand is probably the way this works.
Yes.
I just, that have to happen now per se. If like this is the way that we've been comfortable doing it with before, I would kind of like to see having conversations in the future about. Having each budget more so reflect the actual amount of money we're going to spend on supplies for said activity. And I don't know, but at least having a conversation about it or. I mean, I guess this is like this because of X program is going to need more things this year, just because of something out of the ordinary possibly.
So the way we've done it in the past. Is those little amounts that you see in each sport is for things that. Trying to think how to explain it. Things that they may want. So maybe basketball needs a new. Pad that they can step on and keep the dirt on the bottom of their shoes. So that might come out of their basketball account. But if they need new basketballs, that's going to come out of the general athletic supply account. So.
That's the seven thousand dollars.
Yes. Now, could you switch it and make them all what you think they're going to? Sure. You could do that. That's definitely something you can do. It's just not the way it's been done in the past. So.
Right.
But it definitely could be that way. It wouldn't be difficult to do.
I would like to see that, but that does, by no stretch is speaking for everybody, of course. But we like, just at least have a conversation about it. Therefore, the, the, the coach or the director of the activity knows what he or she has, you know, like that's, that's how I have to work under it. And also, you know, it's, they know they need to spend that on the kids. That's part of it too. I mean, like, you know, you want to spend that money on your, on your, your athletes, your kids to. Under this. The one who's, how do I say it? Say it. The one who's really out in front of it and trying the hardest is going to get the most. As opposed to said coach or director knowing what each activity ought to be spending yearly. That would, that would be the way I'm looking at it. And I'm not necessarily saying that, that's just my opinion. Then that kind of want to just bring it up to talk about it briefly and it's not going to get in the way of me. Voting for anything now. But just, going forward, I'd like to see us at least have a conversation about a potential change there.
That's a good idea. And we had this discussion last year when this came up because it is hard for me to kind of wrap my head around it because you almost got it. And I'm still, I'm not there, but it's almost like it's, it's not petty cash, but it's kind of like your petty cash. It's your budget. It's just a small amount. Everything else comes out of the pool. And my thought was kind of like yours, either just take it up. Because it's kind of an insult if you're a coach to get a hundred bucks. Either take it all up and then the A D distributes it all. Or go back and look at the last five years and figure out what, what a sport needed for a budget.
Right.
But then I would also think that each sport ultimately should probably propose their respective budget to the A D. And then goes on up to be approved by the superintendent, I would think would be fairly difficult. You'd know that better than I would.
Well, that's, I mean, it works. That's the way it works here. Kind of, right? Like, you know, their requisition goes up the chain. But are you talking about like setting the budget?
Well, say, this is, this is my major purchase. I need to make this year. We need to do the, so this is from the, from my normal historical budget. I need this kind of a bump maybe type of a thing.
And then you might still have a reserve for sure that as well.
Sure.
Just wanted to just bring that up.
That'll be a good one for next day to tackle. Yep.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Oh, okay. S R, S R three funds. Okay. We have S R three funds, but beyond. What we're using for, what we have plans for. Do we have something in there? Like, okay, is there, are we actually specifically using S R three funds for student mental health in any way?
All of our S R three funds, and honestly, this is the way that it was recommended that we do it because it's the cleanest way to do it. All of our S R three funds on our S R three program application and then in the budget are set to go to salaries and benefits. Because you offset your salaries and benefits and then you can use the state and local money that you freed up for whatever else you want to.
Right.
And you don't have.
Yeah. We, you and I discussed this. Absolutely. No, I do understand that. Um, I'd like to see that some of the freed up money. I'd like to see a plan in place for student mental health since we have the money.
We actually have, and I don't know if you're aware of this, we have, in addition to our two counselors, we actually have a compass health therapist that is here for the time.
Where?
And we don't pay for her at all. She is paid through compass health and they do their Medicare, Medicaid billing and all of that.
I understand.
So now, having said that, we have had programs that have come in and done presentations on student mental health.
Like professional development, right?
Yes.
Like professional, like a professional development opportunity regarding specifically student mental health, in my opinion, elementary age, the more important, really. And then not that it isn't all important, but like that.
Yes. And then that expense would come out of your professional development budget, which like you said, again, basically comes out of us free.
Okay. Because as I say, like you can certainly supplement it with.
Yes.
These funds.
Yes.
I just think this type of thing that a lot of people are talking about now have kind of used the funds freed up supposedly in, at least in a roundabout way earmarked for student mental health. Specifically for student mental health. It's like I've talked to a couple of superiors who are talking about that type of thing.
And if you look down.
I just think these are, and I think we ought to be thinking along those lines.
If you look down at the twenty-two fourteen, which is what P D is. We really next year are only required to spend about seventeen thousand six hundred dollars. And we're going to spend about twenty-three thousand plus. And that's, so that's part of what we're doing is that freed up money we have put towards P D activities. And there are other things too, but I think that's what you're talking about is are we using that money somewhere else to provide services that we need?
Correct.
Yes. And that's where that comes into play.
I mean, I do like the approach of abusing that money to offset current expensive salary expenses. So as I looked at it, my, my concern was. That, I mean, the good thing is we have a surplus of eighty-six thousand dollars, which is great, but also knowing there's three hundred and eighty-two thousand in Esther money built into this budget. So then the question is, okay, would we have run a deficit budget this year if it wasn't for S R? But then we have two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in one-time projects in the budget. So let's say we take that away. If we take away the S R money and the one-time projects, we essentially have a balanced budget. So it's right there where it needs to be, which then makes, I mean, makes you pretty concerned moving forward that. The good thing is it includes a thousand, there's a thousand dollars at the base. It includes moving people up to thirty-eight, all these things. But then two, three years from now, we've just got to be super careful. I mean, we're in a perfect place right now. We're about, I mean, essentially we're a balanced budget. We're doing some big projects, but we can't go saying, hey, we've got eighty-six thousand dollars surplus. Let's go, let's go spend it all.
No, no, we can't keep living like that. Right.
And we also have that specialized interventionist position in there that we know is only going to be possible while we have S R money. So that position would come out as well. So yes, you're right though. We're, we're right there. So going forward, it's just going to be a matter of being cautious. One of the things I was going to tell you, and that goes back to what Sean said, I do not have career ladder in this budget. Because I would be very, very cautious about if that does get approved. It's going to cost the district about seventy thousand dollars. With everything that we're already doing, we're adding a thousand dollars to the base. We've given them their steps. They get to move over. Plus, if we're going to have to go to that thirty-eight thousand, our salary schedule is already costing us quite a bit. With career ladder, right now the state has a surplus of money. So that money is available for the state to pay sixty percent, the district to pay forty percent. Our forty percent is still going to cost us about seventy thousand dollars. Well, if state revenues decrease over the next few years, that, that's probably going to be the first thing to go. I have lived through career ladder as an administrator before. And so there's different, I don't know how much you guys know about career ladder, but there's different stages, stage one, stage two, stage three. Different hour requirements for each stage. Stage one gets fifteen hundred, stage two gets three thousand, stage three gets five thousand. And. When that goes away, it's really difficult for a teacher to lose five thousand dollars. So my thought is rather than take that seventy thousand and spend it on career ladder. Could you look at a way, since this year you do have that money perhaps to play with and you may not in the future. You know, some of our younger teachers are getting a pretty good jump, jumping to thirty-eight thousand. Can you use that money to then maybe give a little bit of money here and there to our more veteran teachers? The other thing I thought about is through the teacher recruitment and retention grant, we already have developed a chart. Where they're going to earn points for different things. And if they get all their points at the end of the year, they get this stipend. You could increase that stipend for a year and they could get the money that way. I just hesitate, first of all, to add seventy thousand dollars to the budget, knowing that the likelihood of it staying there is slim. Because when you take that money away, that's hard. The other thing is that I just. I have some inherent concerns with career ladder, but I also just think that if, once you start that, it's been difficult for your teachers to take that away. So those are just things to think about going forward.
So can you use career ladder as one time or does it go towards base?
It does not go towards the base.
Doesn't go towards base. So that's a good thing.
It's an additional stipend.
Okay.
So.
And those levels are based on experience.
Yes.
There has to be a committee set up that like overview, you know, there's times spent, there's, I mean, and probably a stipend for that. I, it's been a while since I've been on that type of program, but that's probably at least conversation.
Well, they use that many work as some of their hours.
They.
Yeah, we can get a stipend for it, but if you were on that committee.
You can use it for your career ladder. Well, that's.
So it's more administrative. Part of it on the administrative stand too. Eventually you get evaluation. You walk on water.
Yeah. So fortunately career ladder is something for another night.
It is. Just keep that in the back of your mind. So, because it's not in this.
It's like a body needs to okay the money. Okay, fifteen hundred, okay, the three grand, okay, the five grand.
Right.
Okay. Other questions on budget? Very none. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three budget?
We have to approve this every week first.
You don't have to because it's, it's in the budget.
So we're, we're, we're doing it now.
Well, you're approving the budget and then you're going to approve the salary schedule.
Make that a notice.
Yes.
Do it the other way. So I guess the question would be, is there anybody, well.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, let's, let's do that because let's approve the increase. Let's discuss the increase of the base.
Let's do that first.
Discussion on increase to the base. So the increase of the base is moving everybody to thirty-eight and.
So I have, what I did the chart a little bit different today so that you could clearly see. Putting a thousand dollars on the base would take our base salary to forty, thirty-four thousand three hundred. That gives everybody the benefit of a thousand dollars on the base. You then can see which columns would be affected by thirty-eight thousand. So right now, and again, this could change because we don't have all of our physicians filled. But right now, all of the impact for us is going to be in that bachelor's degree column. Because we don't have anybody else in the other columns that are impacted. But you can see then that the state grant pickup, so it would cost thirty-seven hundred for a teacher with a bachelor's degree and no experience. To get to thirty-eight thousand. State pays seventy percent. We pay thirty percent plus the retirement and Medicare. So for us right now, the total cost to the district to do that would be eighteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Again, that could change based on who we may hire in, because we may have more that need that. And I did put the caveats at the bottom because when I, I'm going to go over this with teachers on Friday at our, at our meeting. This is a state grant right now. It is a one-year state grant. If that is not funded next year, we go back to our salary schedule, our original salary schedule. And so that state grant column, I clearly wanted them to know this may not be available in subsequent years. So the total pay may not be thirty-eight thousand in subsequent years. It may be, you know, it may become state statute next year. But for now, we can only go based on what we know. And right now we know it's, well, the governor hasn't signed it yet, but since it was his baby, we are pretty certain that's going to go for one year right now. So.
So this isn't a permanent increase to base?
It is not.
Okay. Well, that's.
Not at this point.
So can I ask a question? So, so some, so somebody may come in new to the district and they would get thirty-eight thousand.
Yes.
But then the next year they may go to thirty-four.
Yes. And so I'm glad you asked that question because they brought up something I was gonna, something I was going to say that I forgot. My recommendation is to pay that difference. So let's say we have a bachelor's degree, zero student or zero years experience. And she gets thirty-seven hundred dollars more. I would pay that thirty-seven hundred dollars in a thirteenth payment. Make their twelve-month payment, their thirty-four thousand three hundred split in twelve months. Give them that extra money in a one-time payment whenever you decide to. Because if it goes away the next year, they're not used to that in their monthly check. So I would hate for somebody to go out and buy a new car expecting to get that year after year and be able to make the payment. And then it goes away. So if you give them their base salary in twelve payments and give them that extra payment as a thirteenth payment. Then they're not used to that in their monthly check. Does that make sense? And you could give that whenever you decide, you know, maybe it's a nice Christmas bonus. Maybe it's, it's end of the year, whatever you guys decide to do with that. But that would be my recommendation. And then that I think gets to what you were talking about Debbie.
Right. We have a hard enough time getting teachers here anyways.
I have a question. Is it, I, the back of my mind, I remember or think I remember that if you can't give, if you sell salary, you can't make less than what you already did or do in that contract.
You can in this situation because it's grant funded.
Grant funded, okay.
That's why she's.
Right. The thirteen payments removes that.
Right.
Because we like, like I lost five thousand dollars.
Right. It's hard to do.
And then it takes years to get, go back up.
Right.
I guess.
Especially when you're on salary freeze.
Do we have other questions on this one?
Well, yeah, one of my questions is, do you, or you as an active teacher. Think that this would create any sort of hard feelings for the teacher that has been here, you know, several years, six, seven years? And then the new person comes in and just that, to me, when this kept getting proposed, I was like, this is stupid.
Yeah, like the one that's here, it has eight years. It's only going to make three hundred dollars more than the ones that are just coming in.
I mean, it does create a salary compression. I mean, but, I mean, which is where you, I mean, everywhere has salary compression everywhere, but. Uh, elementary, secondary education because of this. That said, I think I, it's easier to swallow knowing that it is a grant for now.
Right.
Long-term, what would happen if this would become permanent? We would definitely have to be talking about what we do with the rest.
Absolutely. You're going to have to really compress your steps all the way through.
To not break it. So that's.
The other thing is that I want to point out that our extra duty contracts are still on that base pay of thirty-four thousand three hundred. So like if you're a coach making twelve percent, it's based on that thirty-four, three, not thirty-eight.
Whenever I looked at it the first time, first thing I thought about is what you said. You have someone who was giving us six years of service, who's getting, who's getting. You have someone who was giving us six years of service, who's getting, who's going to get the exact same amount of money as someone fresh out of college, he's on step one. And there is not a degree of fairness in that, that's correct, but then the, by the same token. It's difficult to not accept the grant that's given to you.
Sure.
Just to give to your people, your personnel. Uh, and I just think it's the type of thing that folks across the board are going to take this money. And, you know, it's like, uh. First of all, I think it's going to be for two years.
I think the potentially. Because Governor.
Right. I think they won't, you know, that's just like, looking at politically, that seems fair to me as well. Um, and I, I, there, you're you're, the sentiments that you all just discussed may very well exist. But by the same token, I think people will understand. The people on our staff will understand, no matter where they sit on the schedule, that like, yeah, of course we had that.
We don't have a choice.
We got their feet, right, you know, like, they're handed it, we got to get, there's, you don't say no, so, you know, really, it's like there's no. I I I believe the best thing to do is to 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 do this.
Swallow it if you're in the last three years of your, of your career, and the best three years is what you get your retirement on.
Yeah, but I mean.
But that's not going to be impacted by this.
Shouldn't be impacted by that.
If they're getting thirty, three, four thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Then somebody down the road that's been there thirty years or twenty five years, whatever. You know, that may make a pretty good chunk of difference, for that three years, that's ten thousand dollars on retirement.
Let's just make it an assumption, you change your retirement salary schedule.
Which, when I estimated that before, if we changed our entire salary schedule and put thirty eight thousand on the base and let it run through, it's like two hundred twenty five thousand dollars.
So then you go from five hundred a step to a hundred dollars a step.
Yeah.
No, you're, no, you're contributing more to P S R S for sure on it, though.
Yeah.
I mean, because, simply because it tires, we're saying.
Yeah.
Sure.
From the start.
Sure.
You know what I mean, like, that.
Okay, so we, as long as we all agree, we got to do it, let's vote on it and move on.
I move that we accept the, uh, but I I. Applying for the grant or accepting the grant money, I don't.
Just to prove the salary schedule.
I I would like to move that we accept the salary schedule as presented to us.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Propose the thing, goes unanimous.
And you do have in your, I'm sorry, Sean, but you do have in your folder too then, just so that you know. The resulting change that it will make as well on the. Classified salary schedule, because when you raise the base of the certified, it changes the classified.
And that's good.
Just FYI, what's really nice with that change is that it keeps our, uh, for sure, our A's up above minimum wage. And that's the goal, so, just wanted you to be aware of that. Yes, so when we raise the base a thousand, it raises theirs as well, not. Not a thousand, but per.
All right, let's go back to the budget. Further discussion on the budget, if not, can I have a motion to approve the budget?
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes, we have approved the twenty twenty two, twenty three budget.
And just for all those out there listening to remember, the budget is fluid, so you're going to have amendments, you're going to have changes. So this gives us a starting point, and as always, you'll have amendments as you go along.
And and I think the good thing about it is, we've got some, we've got some wiggle room in it, we've got some this. Conservative, and there's some anticipation, some miscellaneous, there's some capital improvement money in there that we needed, we can tap that. So there is a, there's quite a bit of flexibility, it's like, I went through it, in the same sentence, I'll say, it's a great budget. But are we a year away from recession, or two years away from recession, we we just don't know, so we we just need to be. Super conservative for the next. Uh, very good, uh, F one to F four transfer, tell us about that.
So we can make a one time transfer per year from fund one to fund four, from your general obligation fund to your capital projects fund. Um, I'm recommending moving two hundred fifteen thousand dollars this year, which will set you up next year. To be able to have that money to do some capital projects if you want to, if you don't want to. It also sets you up nicely then for fiscal year twenty four, if you do another transfer next year, to be able to do that track project. Uh, when we repaired the track this year, they told us we should get two years out of it, so my goal between this year's. Transfer and what I have budgeted for next year's transfer is to set you up to be able to do a track project in fiscal year twenty four.
Discussion. See, none, can I have a motion to approve the fund transfers?
I move to approve the fund transfer.
Have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimously to approve the fund transfer. Announcements. Bit of page, next regular meeting is June twenty one. Twenty twenty two, any other announcements?
We will let you know prior to that, that meeting may have to be in the high school library, because they, if they've already started in here. It's going to be warm and potentially very messy, so we'll just let you know ahead of time, but just know it may be at the end of the high school library.
And then there's probably decent likelihood that we'll be meeting in between then to approve. Or offers.
Very possible, yes.
How many positions do we still have open?
Two, high school P E, high school business. Oh, I had it in my head today, sixth grade, the spent interventionist, if we end up going that route. And there's one more, there's. It's like six.
All right, well, it's progress, better than a month ago or two months ago.
Maybe. I don't know.
Very good, all right, that could be worth. All right. Go to close session, can I have a motion to. Go to close session, adjourn and go to close session. Time anymore. We've got their agenda.
I'll make a motion, go into closed session for personal matters in section six, ten point zero two one. One label, three personnel, and thirteen personnel records, R S M O and student point zero six.
A sec.
We'll call a vote, Mark.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Naomi.
Yes.
Brett.
Yes.
I'm yes, adjourn, open session, adjourn, and we are looking to close session. Thank you very much.